July eighth at four thirty and our first order of business will be. Uh approval of minutes from June twenty fourth. All those in favor? Uh approval of the manifest. Payroll forty thousand five hundred eighty seven dollars and eight five seven thousand nine hundred fifty seven dollars and seventy eight cents. Counts payable four hundred seventy thousand dollars or four hundred seventy thousand three hundred fifty two dollars and sixteen cents. Three hundred eighty dollars to the V D O E and three hundred twenty five thousand dollars to Madison School District for a total of eight hundred forty seven thousand. Eight hundred forty seven, eight hundred thousand, eight hundred ninety seven dollars, seventy nine cents if I can get it together today. Do I have a motion to approve the manifest? All those in favor? I have a second by Rick.
Went too fast for me.
Guess I can ask the public comment. Perfect. Uh old home week waiver and raffle forms. Standard issue old home week stuff that we see every year. Uh waiver for alcohol on town property from Thursday, July thirty first through Monday, August eleventh. And a request to have sole use of the lower field from for the entirety of old home week Thursday prior. Any questions?
Is the inclusion of thirty first and and Thursday and Monday to help with setup and take down?
Yeah, we set up that Thursday before.
I mean, the alcohol along the alcohol.
Well, yeah. I'm not setting it up without a beer too.
I guess my question is, who else uses the field?
Uh softball.
Okay, so wouldn't be any events there?
Right.
Yep, and rec for the one day a week that they do use the field will use the upper one.
Uh the only one to just talk about briefly is the alcohol restriction on town property. We have a restriction fifty one weeks of the year and suddenly we have a week of family themed events and we allow public drinking. That is, does that strike you as kind of?
We've been doing it this way for?
Well, I know we've been doing it forever.
Long as I can remember without issue, but.
I think it's time for it to end.
Well.
To just keep keep the ban on alcohol?
Yes.
Even during old home week?
Yes. We're talking about public drinking on the beaches, wherever.
I don't think so.
No, he's not here.
It looks like the lights are off. Well, I can say that I've been doing it for the past five years without issue.
Then why don't you do it? Why do we have a restriction at all? So I guess that's, I guess that's what strikes me is it's we're not gonna allow it for thirty first to eleventh. On the twelfth, you won't be able to until next year.
Well, so.
It's kind of backwards. Uh either either allow it or you don't. And I think if we're doing it, nothing against old home week, but it's a family themed event week. And we're allowing public drinking, it just strikes me as uh not right.
To me, it feels like it's like family barbecue all week. You know, and folks have their beer or whatever with their family barbecue and.
If that family barbecue's in you at your private property.
Yeah, what I was gonna, yeah, what I was gonna say is that.
To.
I can have a beer in my backyard, that's fine.
Throw my two cents in just from.
Sure.
Uh to be honest with you, I I get what you're saying. Where when we're condoning it for three or four days that they're asking, but I don't think you could go to any of these beaches on a normal day and not see a beer or not see something in a cup. I know when we did our stuff, and again, that's there was, there's never been open alcohol everywhere. But if it, we didn't see it and especially if it didn't cause issues, we let it go. So I would be hard pressed today if you went down the foot of the lake to see somebody not having something cold in a cup. So my idea with this is they're just asking that nobody gets in trouble for it. And I I agree with you, you don't want to condone somebody getting drunk and causing a problem at old home week. But at the same time, I don't think that saying that the old home week committee can have beer open where they don't have to hide it in a cup. I'm assuming, but if Elvis Jimmy was here, because it's probably one of those things, it's not an issue till it becomes an issue. Do you see what I'm saying? You know, I I understand the waiver part.
I agree.
I don't understand the waiver, what they need it for, and what was that always asked for?
And I assume we haven't had any issues?
No.
I'm not aware of any issues, number one. Number two, it's not just for the committee. Because I could kill a.
It's for everyone.
Right.
It's a public drinking relief for a week.
And the whole, but the whole, I mean, one of the things was like the meals. We basically only offer kids drinks.
Yep.
We sell soda.
Yep. So like bean hole, they wanna be with their supper, they could have a beer with their supper.
Well, all across the board, the chicken barbecue, whatever, you want B Y O B, you have whatever you want, daddy wine, whatever. And I think the only reason for asking for the waiver is to make people people feel comfortable that they're not breaking the law. Because we got a waiver for the events. And it's not personally to me, the decision's yours to make.
Do do we, in the event of of something occurring, how much liability are we accruing?
Well, we didn't provide it.
Right, I don't think any, all we're doing.
But you allowed it when it was banned.
Right, but this, wouldn't it be the same amount of liability for all the guys playing softball that are drinking anyway even though it's prohibited? I mean. I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
I don't either, it's always been.
To me, the ban is the same thing as locking your door, it keeps the honest people out. These people are still drinking up there, the ban just keeps it from getting out of control.
Well, it gives the police some some bite into doing something about it if we had to, but then you still come into the discipline, they conduct staff.
So it's a, it's sort of like the S T I regulations, we just ignore them and they'll go away, right?
Yeah.
I feel, so the nine years that I've been here full time, um never seen a problem. Um I do feel like it does create a relaxed atmosphere of responsible fit, because it is family stuff. And people are not coming to get smashed at the bean hole supper. Like it, I think, you know, I agree with Mike that it's just have a beer and I, you know, obviously folks aren't drinking and driving. Um it's just, it's, it just relaxes, I just feel like I agree that it creates just a relaxed atmosphere. Um and people aren't like, you know, sneaking stuff. Um and I think if we had an incident, it absolutely things would change. But I think where we haven't had one and it really does just relax, you know, create that relaxed atmosphere for the week, I'm okay with it. But I would be curious though, like is there a li, like have we ever looked into, is there a liability thing when we have the waiver? Do you got anybody know?
It's just the town ordinance, right?
Right.
That's all we're doing is the town ordinance, saying
Not, yeah, not.
if we see, if if not us, if the police see you with a beer, they're not gonna go tell you to either dump it or put it in a cup or get rid of it. You know, so I think that's all you're doing and I still think it falls back on the person, but.
I mean, because of. Yeah, I don't know, I just.
I don't know.
Linda, would you mind asking?
It's worth discussion.
Just so we have the answer?
Nope, I understand.
Worth discussion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you approve all the requests?
Would that be okay? What's that?
I have a motion from Rick to approve.
Oh, to approve the
The request.
The waiver?
Okay, I'll second that.
Second by Jim. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm going to abstain because I'm on the committee.
We have a permit for raffle duty, is that possible?
Yep, no, what I was gonna do is separately, the second one is um for the Lucky Ducky raffle. Standard, we see the same thing every year, we sell them for five dollars a duck. First place a hundred, second place seventy five, third place is fifty, and the rest of the proceeds go to the Madison Scholarship Fund.
I'll motion.
I'll second. To approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, how many, how many ducks are?
Honestly, we sold.
There's like six hundred and twenty five available.
Okay, so you.
We sold what, a hundred and thirty last?
And the way we've always done it is basically first come, first served, if you got your lucky number, you can pick that one.
I know, okay.
And sign your name beside it.
I was just looking at the total, um prizes here, that's a lot of ducks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it's
Okay.
Like everything else, I mean, please come out and support it, it is waning. You know, the folks that used to buy one for all the grandkids, some of those folks have passed on or moved away and it's random, I mean, I always count on my mother, she does that, she buys one for each of the great grandkids.
Yeah, and great kids.
And and great kids. It's a, it's a worthy cause and like I said, we don't make any money off it, we donate those pr- those prizes to the winners. And quite often the winners will donate it back to the scholarship, so.
Sure.
Every little bit helps on the scholarship, so far for going on six years that I've been involved, we haven't had to tap into the principal on the investment account. We've been able to fundraise enough through the golf tournament, this and a couple other small endeavors to support all the scholarships annuallys.
Let's put that in the signature.
Yes. Twenty twenty five Police Cruiser Uptick Invoice, this exhibit C, so this is, we are asking the lease company to pay this invoice for the stickers on the new cruiser, so this needs a signature from us, just me?
Yeah, just you, but does it need a motion that you know you're approving part of the payment?
Four hundred and sixty dollars for the graphics.
Yep, and it was built into the lease, but we need to motion and vote on this invoice in order for them to pay it.
Okay, alright.
And then we talked. And then we talked about next, next time, just kind of breaking out these smaller things, not until we so we're not going to.
Do you need a motion?
I do.
I'll do it.
A motion to approve from Jim and a second from Rick, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, believe it or not, heating season fuel prices. Um Eastern is offering us the same price they've given us for the last three?
Three years.
Three years?
Alright, my.
Which seems pretty reasonable.
Yep, it'll, the prices are reasonable and they have their hold the study like that for three years, so you can't argue with it.
So just so folks know, the propane price is a dollar eighty seven nine, um a gallon for propane, and again, I think that's dang good rate.
Well, when you look at the the price for a homeowner, it's three dollars and twenty one cents.
Yep, unless you go through, um like co-ops. You go, if you go through co-ops like Art Town Energy Alliance, you can get a rate comparable to what the town's getting. So what's the number two fuel? Is that oil?
Oil, eating oil, yep. Eating oil.
What do we use oil for?
Uh this building is oil, um there's oil at the that garage, that garage, yeah. The fire apartment and the library are propane.
Propane, okay.
And the old, ah the, oh, is there? We don't do anything over at the transfer stations propane, for that little shed.
We don't, we don't actually prepay this, right?
No, no, pay bills.
No, I thought the prepay option is for town employees.
Okay, I see.
And again, they're offering town employees these prices. I'm not sure how much better they are than buying it off the street, but they're there if employees want it.
That three thirty, three dollars and three ninety nine, um is what they're offering, like already current customers. So I got an offer in the mail for that amount.
Same, blah, yeah.
Or not in the mail, in an email saying that I, because I'm a customer, I can do that. Same amount.
Not as a selectman, but as an individual propane purchaser, I highly recommend looking at Art Town Energy Alliance. Cause you join, or you pay thirty dollars in January or something, and then you get the thousands of people group rate of like one and two, like two-ish dollars, maybe to even two fifty a gallon for the season. So. Personally.
Any other questions?
We didn't mention how much the oil was.
Oh, and so the oil price for twenty twenty five, twenty twenty six is two dollars, oh, two ninety seven nine. So two dollars and ninety eight cents.
Oh, and our town uses Eastern. By the way.
Any other questions, discussion? Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Slide that into signatures. Nothing in old business, Joy, do you have anything on your list?
Um Oh, for the um, for the revals, a couple folks have reached out to me kind of with difficult, technical difficulties, almost with like the website or stuff.
Really?
Um, yeah, it used to be when we, you know, when you went to the town website and you clicked the assessing button, it went straight to Madison. It's now going to, again, this is on the avatar side, I'm sure, it's now going to a login page. And it's automatically default to select subscriber and you have to have a username and password. Which folks just click guest instead, it produces a five digit code that they have to.
Oh, right, but in the dur, in the letter that they received, it says that if you go on there, hit subscriber and put Towns Madison as the user and Madison T W N in the password, that's how you get into just the Madison preliminary stuff.
Okay.
It's on the, it's in the letter.
Okay, good, okay, and then, yeah, you know, just guest do it, and then um.
The guest will bring you to the what we have for values now, not the prelim ones. If you, if you click into, click in under guest
Uh huh.
And put that five digit code in.
Yeah.
And then it'll bring you to all the towns and you pick Madison.
Yeah.
That I don't believe is gonna be our preliminary.
It did have.
Oh, it didn't have, oh, okay, I thought it had the old ones still up there.
I went in over the weekend because I have folks contacting me.
Oh, okay. Oh, good, alright, I thought. So I thought they were leaving those so that you had an actual comparison, so that you can look at your old value and your new value at the same time.
I haven't have to, email. Um and then if the folks look at the bottom of their property card, it has a link to go online and make an appointment. Make the phone appointment, the twenty minute phone appointment, so I did that and it worked.
Yeah, and they've been still adding dates, we're up to our seventh day of appointments, I think they've added to us. Um but Friday is the last day, you can make an appointment and they're not adding anymore after that, but
Okay.
Those first three days went like nothing, then we added the seventeenth, then we added the following Monday and Tuesday, and then we've added August fourth and fifth.
Yes.
And fifth, when I went on there this morning, I think there was only three appointments left.
How many people, you know, how many people?
Well, it's all day, twenty minutes, so I want to say it's a few hundred, a few hundred people have asked to talk to the assessor. In fact, quite a few people come in and Michael's been doing a good job trying to explain to the people how the, the theory on how this works, don't freak out.
Right.
You know, about your rate compared to your.
I think you'll find that that's the gist of the appointments, is people are freaking out about their value based on the current tax rate and they're not realizing that we're gonna send it again in October.
Right.
And I think it's noted right on, right on that document, don't, this is, don't cut it in half.
You have to read it and comprehend it.
Right.
We have a lot of people who call saying, I don't want anybody in my house, well, we're not calling to ask to get in your house, we're calling to just make an appointment if you need it.
Yeah.
You know, they, they're, yeah, they're not absorbing the letter.
Yep.
Is the letter on, like, is there a generic version of the letter on the website? So that folks can.
I don't think there is.
Is it worth doing just to, I I give, just so you can point folks to that and just say, make sure you read this carefully?
Oh, well, they should have the letter.
Right, but just, I'm always, you know, provide paper but also provide online and vice versa.
The big problem is people don't read it.
No.
There's a link to all these letters.
They look at the numbers and freak.
On the website.
They don't read it.
Uh just to the values, not the letters.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, just everybody's value by map, the lot and by owner.
Town values went more than double?
No, it's just little under double.
Well, just under. By a million, yeah.
Ninety, ninety three point six two, something like that.
Yep.
Anything else, Joy?
Um Thank you to whoever fixed the buoys at foot of the lake beach, I guess in all the winds that we've had, they'd kind of snapped and were floating in and it happened over the weekend, so I don't know if the D P W was called in to um fix the buoy around the beach, so thank you to whoever did that. Um I did have something else, sorry, I didn't write it down, so it's already gone. All said, thank you.
This is selectman list?
Yeah.
Okay, uh other than what I told you guys up, the master plan, it's got a survey out and anybody that could take it. Uh I believe you guys said there's a written copy upstairs, Linda?
Hmm.
So they can come in and get it if they don't like doing it online, but if we could get that filled out, I missed the last meeting, but I read the minutes today, so. That's it.
That's it.
I, I don't have anything, but I did notice that the pike's in town paving.
They are.
Forest pines.
Forest pines.
They're all done with town line to the best of my knowledge and the, I don't know if they were putting top coat on forest pines today.
I see that somebody came in and thanked you for it. Online or something.
At the Facebook or something, yeah.
Yeah, I saw that, somebody got to come in, thanked you for the paving job.
But suddenly, I'm suddenly changing away when you follow.
You should've said.
The truck.
Nope, they're bowing right through it, it looks like they came in under budget on Town Line Road, so. Sounds good. I don't have anything on my list, Linda?
No.
Chief?
Well, the first thing this morning, I got an email from a gentleman who was very aghast at how they left the road yesterday.
Which road?
Forest minds, oh, because they just did, they did a paver shim yesterday, which they got all done.
Yep.
And I mean, obviously they're, it's not full width or anything, it's just, you know, fill in the divots and stuff like that, so I, as politely as I could explain to him that they would be there for at least the next two or three days.
Yep.
Doing a full width overlay, just gotta give them time, these hot temperatures. I mean, they're all on machines, it's not like it's killing the man, it takes longer for that material to set up.
Yep.
The hotter the air temperature is, a lot of people don't realize that, and there's extra rolling involved before they can allow vehicles on it, or else we'll end up with ruts and so they're a professional company that I hope, and I I really believe we're gonna get a good job at the end of the day, but you gotta get in time to do it. And I do have, we got a nice little shot in the arm from the big Corologic wire, so we're up to eighty one point six percent collected, we got a wire for almost one point three million today, so that really helped get our percentage up.
Oh, that's good.
And I'm waiting. I got close, closer to our average or? Yeah, uh well, yeah, a little bit down, but I'm waiting for two more wires to hit our bank, I got notification that they were wired in, but I always wait for Linda to give me confirmation that they actually hit our bank before I process them.
Yep.
So I should be able to do that tomorrow, and that's about another hundred and seventy three thousand dollars. So we're getting there, still two more days to go, and there'll be a mad rush to get in this building. I think people were waiting for it to cool down before they came in.
They should come into the air conditioning instead.
They're gonna be late.
That's, oh, I've got it.
I just remembered my other thing. Um, the office assistant. Um, if it's slow, it would be a good time to train someone, if it's busy, it's a good time to bring someone in. So I didn't know um if you and Kate had kind of assembled an official, especially again with Z B A stuff, stuck enough up so much of her time too. Um if guys, I know you've assembled like notes, but I don't know if it translated into a job description, and whether we have Bob's input and um Chief's input.
It hasn't.
Okay. Do you want, are you ready to do that?
I don't know. I'm, I'm honestly, I'm really nervous to bring someone, a new person into the mix. Cause personalities are a huge deal, you could be the greatest employee in the world, but if personalities don't quite mesh, it can make for a a hard, a hard day, yeah, and and so I've had some trepidation in the whole thing, I know at before I was just losing my mind, I'm just overwhelmed, I'm just, I'm dying and then then, you know, but then when things calm down a little bit, you're like, well, it wasn't so bad. I just worry about that, because we've got a crew upstairs of just really five of us, and we all get along so good, and it just makes me nervous to try and think about bringing somebody else into the mix. That's my honest opinion on the whole reason why I'm
Appreciate that.
Kinda hesitant to try and get somebody in, you know, I, yeah, that's, that's how I feel about it. I understand that there is, some days there is a need for it, not every day do we also always need help. And it's hard to to predict what day you're gonna need help, um and yeah, so that's kind of why I've been dragging my feet on it.
So I was even thinking like the water stuff, like how many phone calls you guys have made to try to like track down water and stuff and.
Yeah, I, yeah, no, no, I, I, I
Pardon me?
I understand it, I I get it. But I haven't pulled the trigger, no.
I think the biggest thing, it's the five of them upstairs, and if you guys don't feel like you need it right now, then I just assume not spending money.
I, I, yeah, I mean, and like I say, it, you know, February is just awful, I'm, my head is ready to explode. But then, you know, June comes around, it's not so bad, it's nice, it's not a problem, there's not so many, you know.
But then when budget season fires up again, shit.
Sure, and but, and this summer hasn't been like last summer because we didn't, haven't had those budget meetings in in that mix either, so that's kind of given some relief. Um a lot of what, a lot of what Kate does for zonings, you know, those kinds of things are really very technical and she's got a handle on it, and I can't imagine bringing someone to try and take any of those things over for her. But, yeah, there's, there's, there's always something that could be done in the office, but like I said.
And Bob too, and did Chief let us know when or not he?
Um, I, no, I, I haven't, I haven't talked, I, I, Bob hasn't mentioned anything lately, or hasn't mentioned anything about it, I don't know what his theory is if yeah, I, I don't know, but that's, that's my.
It's also fair that all five of you get to interview the person too. Because they, they would be upstairs with you.
Sure, oh, I, I, I would hope that we'd all have, sure, because they would be in the mix.
Yeah.
Michael?
I'll do anything you guys want me to do in that regard, but that person can't come in my office for any reason.
Yeah, that's fine.
I was just gonna say.
I mean, there's
Law, yeah.
There's regulations on, on my side.
Yeah.
So this, if there were a, an assistant hired, it's not gonna be of any help to me.
No.
And I'm fine till Becky retires, which is coming soon.
How soon?
Not that soon, but soon.
She's not gonna do another presidential election, let's put it that way.
Can't say you don't blame her. I can't believe her.
No, I can't either.
No.
Been doing it a long time, well earned, just not looking, it's not a day I'm looking forward to.
Well, if you get the right person in and they can be trained on kind of things and how things operate, then maybe they slide over at some point.
It's gonna be tough, if not impossible, to replace Becky, it's like replacing Wayne Jones, you've hired six people to do that.
Yeah, one guy.
Alright. Signature items?
By the way, now I'm only walking up on the chairman.
Think so.
Yeah.
A little sticker on this one, Linda?
Oh, that's just a different page, sorry. It's just that one.
Oh, okay, okay.
I moved it onto, moved it onto one that I thought would be harder to find.
Glad that wasn't recorded, you needed that sticker or anything, yeah?
This is from our last number. This is from our last non-public. With that, I will motion that we enter non-public session for RSA ninety one A, Core three eleven, numeral two, little E. Consideration or negotiation of pending claims or litigation which has been threatened, ready, or filed by or against the public body or any subdivision thereof. Or by or against any member member thereof because of his or her membership in such public body. Until the claim or litigation has been fully adjudicated or otherwise settled, any application filed for tax abatement pursuant to law with. Any body or board shall not constitute a threatened or filed litigation against any public body for the purposes of this sub-paragraph. Do I have a second? Roll call, vote.
Joy?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye. Thank you, Josh.